Do you guys go on to think?
Fourth time to do it too. I'm just thinking.
I haven't got, I haven't got skin.
But I did watch.
Let's call the finance committee, the whole order and bring me in the pledge.
And to your public for what he stands. My nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk for welcome please.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Javzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Ingraham.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Swainy.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
All present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, up next is the approval of the agenda. We start with general public comments on agenda items only. Uh, and then we have a couple of presentations, the E nine eleven director. And then their material recovery facility director, a presentation list on their departments. Um, we have several appointments to boards and commissions that time of year. Um, after that, committee reports, we've got nine business items to get through and then we don't enter governmental affairs. No administrative controller issues, unfinished business, no new business, we'll have general public comment again. Announcements and then adjournments. So there are motions to approve the agenda.
They'll move.
Support Marino.
Moved and supported all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have an agenda. Up next will be general public comments on agenda items only. One for general public comment. Okay, seeing no one for general public comment, we will get right into it. Uh, department presentations, E nine eleven director, check this.
Morning.
Good morning.
So. You guys, uh, I'm assuming they're all know me because I'm up here quite a bit. So, uh, Chad Gattis. Been in the director spot thing here in two months now, so everything's going smooth. Um. Wanted to start out with an interesting fact, kind of a trivia question for you guys, see if you know. Uh, do you guys know where the first nine one man call was ever been?
This in the county or the?
No, the whole nation, the very first one.
New York.
City? Nope.
I'm gonna guess Michigan.
Nope.
Flashing to DC.
Nope. Any other show? Nope. So it was, uh, Hayleysville, Alabama in nineteen sixty-eight is the very first one and the federal government. Decided they need to have a three-digit emergency, uh. Number and so they hired with AT&T. And that was the very first contract, so. That's the two as well.
Flag it right on. So that, does that mean we off the office? Do you know what the call was for?
It was a test.
That's a trick question.
Now is this real saying that's like fifty bucks now.
But the significant of these coins is that the, uh, you pass them out through our dispatchers and supervisors, um.
Thanks, Chad.
And then, uh, when they do something above a me up, so that's why you hand us out, so. I figured that you guys still get one as well, so. Yeah, um, thank you. So, uh, these stats are for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five stats. And, uh, as you go through this, it's, uh. It's interesting that my staff can do so much with so little, uh, numbers with the staffing levels. Because as you can tell with just the radio transmissions themselves, that's one million two hundred and sixty-two times they pressed a little button around their neck to talk on the radio. In the year. So that's nine dispatchers and four supervisors doing that. And then on the left-hand side is the different types of calls that we receive. We do see wireline calls, which is your landline phones. Wireless calls, voiceover internet protocol, wipe calls. Administrative calls, which is the non-emergency nine-one-one lines, that's seven seven three one thousand number. Forty-nine texts and then for a total of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-four calls we did last year. And then fifty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dispatch complaints. So we actually sent where they had notification from law enforcement. MMR fire calls, that kind, that kind of stuff, so. Uh, you can see how the call type is broken down with obviously the non-emergency is the, the most significant. Significant there. And then also the calls by police agency, you can see where that breaks down with our law enforcement and then EMS and fire calls. So, right around seventeen hundred fire and fifty-three hundred rescue and sixty-three hundred ambulance runs for the county. And again, that's, I give all the credit to my staff because without them doing all this, it would, uh, it'd go unanswered, right? So, kudos to them. They do a great job. They've handled the last year and. They continue to do it even through the holiday season and, and they just keep answering the phone, dispatching people out, so kudos to them. So I guess I know it's kind of short and sweet, but. That's, uh, I wanted to leave it up to questions that you guys might have for, for me on the stats or whatnot and.
I have a question. When did you start, um, taking checks and it's kind of small, right?
Yeah, so we took, we started taking texts right around four years ago, uh, when we got our new Viper phone system and we went next gen nine-one-one. So that's when all that integrated together.
Why do you think it's so such a small percentage?
Uh, because I don't, I don't think people can just sit there and, and do this, you know. Emergency, yeah, yeah, they, they'll be fumbling through the phone and stuff like that. Now, we've had a couple where they couldn't get to the phone and they were texting us and so we still send them, you know, help, but. Um, I think just everybody knows nine-one-one, that's, it's easy.
So you had non-emergency calls. Can you give example of some of those, uh, calls?
Uh, something that, um, like weather conditions, road conditions like this morning, you know, people calling in. The, the non-emergency number, our seven seven three one thousand number.
Okay.
Um, just any general information. Uh, something that isn't an emergency, like maybe a loose dog or, or something of that nature.
Yeah, you want to go in a little bit, uh, explain to them that now everything went wireless.
Mm-hmm.
Very few landline anymore and how the funding affects it.
Sure.
Of the college.
Absolutely. So wireless phone calls like what you were saying is, is by far the, everybody's got a cell phone, right? And what the funding is based on is, is three dollars per device that connects to a network, the network being Verizon, AT&T, Boost Mobile. And with the CMU students, uh, their money from their devices go back to their home location. So if it's, they're from Wayne County, for example, they're up here to school, they use our services because it's an emergency when they call nine-one-one. We supply that service, but yet the funding goes back to Wayne County. So we don't see any of that funding. So realistically, we're about seventy-two to seventy-four percent. Of the actual population that we collect from the other twenty-two percent pian students from CMU that we don't see any funding for. So. Is that answer?
I just wanted her to understand that that is an issue.
Yeah, it is. It's, uh, in the, the three-dollar surcharge that the state, the, that is, is coming up. So hopefully they look at the, the senators and everybody in Lansing, look at that number. And because we're not the only ones that are trying to cut funding here and there to, to have a budget, right? And we're not the only nine-one-one center struggling, so. And we don't, we don't ask the, you know, for a millage dollars or, or anything like that. It's one hundred percent funded by the three-dollar surcharge fee. So.
Just a request, but let your dispatchers know that we appreciate those folks. I know it's a, can be a very stressful job. It can be a traumatic job with some of the stuff that they deal with.
Yeah, absolutely. I will. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Goss?
Thank you, Chad.
And next is Dave Borton, material recovery facility director.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I'm gonna focus on material management planning and charity will focus on operations. So, um, as it stands right now, um, work plan, plans for all eight counties for the material management, uh, planning. Process have all been approved. Um, we have asked for, uh, a, an advance on that, uh, funding from the state. Uh, each county has asked for a ten thousand dollar advance funding on that. Um, to be able to continue to hopefully, uh, be able to put a contractor as far as our RFPs that have been released. Uh, and have now been received back, uh, as far as material management planning, uh, into the future. Uh, the next meeting is, that we have is in December and, uh, that is in Claire. Uh, we'll score them proposals that we have in, um, I think we ended up with five proposals. Uh, that came in, uh, I think we had six or seven companies or what we thought was going to be six or seven companies. Um, at our RFP meeting last month, we ended up with, uh, I think two or three of them combined forces to work together on them proposals. Um, the numbers that are coming back, um, are really all over the place. Uh, it's, it's very interesting to see that proposal, uh, with, just looking at the numbers, uh. Not doing any evaluation yet at this point, uh, until we have the opportunity to read through everything, but, uh, the numbers are really scattered all over. Um, and until we did pick a vendor, we can't, uh, issue anything on what the numbers may be. Uh, but we are, like I said, we, them, them came in on Monday, uh, and we'll continue to work through them. Um. All, all seven counties or all eight counties, including us, um, has, uh. Voiced, uh, the fact that they, you know, for the foreseeable future, they look forward to be able to continue to work with Isabella County. Uh, on material management planning into the future. Uh, there is, uh, you know, at least verbal commitments, uh, to want to continue that process.
Oh, well, can we?
Yeah.
I have questions, you can imagine that. Um. First one, did you get a lot of additional questions after the initial RFPs?
I think we had, uh, we had two additional questions. We had some questions upfront, um. Uh, what we ended at was, uh, uh, the people that were emailing questions, we put all of them, uh, once we had a, a set list on material management planning. Bidders, um, we've put that into an email, um, and we posed every question that was asked beforehand. We put that on that posting so that everybody knew what the questions were that was asked by other companies. And that response that was given in that prior, um, RFP meeting. Uh, and then we had, I think the only thing they had any question on was, um, uh, with it. It would kind of use standard language on an RFP, uh, which part of that standard language is a bid bond. Um, which bid bonds are real, realistically only for construction purposes. And, uh, we waived that bid bond because we're not doing any construction, we're doing material management plans, so. Uh, that was really the only question that really came back in afterward, after that meeting.
Go ahead, I already asked. I got another question, but you go ahead first.
I know, I, I think there's some confusion in part of the public and we'll, we'll hear about. We shouldn't be cooperating regionally, uh, that we're gonna have to deal with, uh, nuclear waste. Uh, we're gonna have traffic, which if it comes here, that's probably correct, but, uh, it doesn't, we don't really have an option. Uh, we do have to meet the state requirements for this planning process and. I would think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, a lot of the services counties have done, are doing. Maybe there are some advantages working regionally in terms of efficiency and reducing costs. And so, you know, we're, we're. Giving it, you know, a, a very thorough examination, uh, through the process and, and, um. Trying to come up with a way to reduce the, the. Not modern material going out in landfills, which I think is, should be a responsibility of, of every citizen. But just wanted to bring that up and correct me if I'm wrong in any of my assumptions.
No, I think the big thing that, um, the misconception is, is that, you know, uh, the intent is just to stream every bit of waste out of all. Um, eight counties in through Isabella County and that's not the, and the idea behind it. The idea behind it is just to, to help manage how that waste flows. Um, it's not to bring it all through Isabella County and, and, and keeping in mind that we're, there's the. There's absolute distinction between waste and recycling and, um, you know, the. The intent is absolutely not to bring all the waste through Isabella County. We don't have a landfill to start with. We don't want to start one. Um, at least I make that statement because I don't, I don't think it's a great idea to even consider. Um, but, uh, you know, be, and, and, and if, and I say that in the fact that, keeping in mind, we already pay for a closed landfill. Um, you know, there's a dollar figure in Isabella County's budget, um, that designates. Um, testing that has to be done with a closed landfill. Um, can, you know, taking that into consideration, you could look in the budget and see how much that dollar figure is. Um, that dollar figure would be a lot higher if you were actually still monitoring a open landfill. Um, it, there's some other things that can go with that, but, uh, yeah, the big thing is, is, uh, you know, the idea of, of why we started this. Was to maybe funnel more recyclable materials into Isabella County to be able to increase the capacity. Uh, through the Murph, uh, do an impossible expansion and upgrade on equipment to be able to look to the future. Um, and I think you're gonna hear in some of the stuff that charity will talk about, the reason why we can show the viability of that. Uh, but, uh, you know, the big thing is on, on the material management planning side is to be able to. Make sure that we're helping control how that waste in our surrounding counties, um, is, uh, you know, where it's going and how it. Um, can affect even Isabella County.
Comment and a question, so I get two, um. Just a comment, uh, where you brought up about the loads and everything and, uh. The facility has rejected loads that were not considered clean or has too much residual effect in there, so. The loads coming into the, the facility should be all recyclable, so there always gets a little bit of trash in there, but, you know, we try to keep it under ten percent. So, but they have rejected loads that came in with. Too much. Material that's not recyclable.
Yeah, and we also always have that ability to be able to, um, if, if somebody comes in and dumps and we see we're above a ten percent. Residual rate, um, you know, it's off of an eye evaluation, but, uh, uh, we do upcharge that, uh, and it's a twenty-five dollar a ton upcharge.
Um, yeah, first of all, Jake and Charity, I'd like to really congratulate you on the fantastic and hard job you have on keeping all the counties together. Especially with some tricky moves by the state that were not anticipated and not what they said in the first place. But also I wanted to say that, um. Like Jerry was talking about, a lot of the public or constituents really don't understand what's going on here, don't really understand that it's a enterprise, uh. Part of our county and one of the things is to bring more businesses here to recirculate, uh, things in the, uh. Recycling stream and to make money actually. Uh, the other thing is that I was wondering about, um, re- recycle coach, how's that going? I've had some people tell me that they were wanting to.
There's, there's been an increase at, in the amount of people that are using it, but not, not as great as what we'd like to see. So one of the things that we're working on right now is trying to, uh, have an online presence on social media. It was mentioned in the advisory board meeting that maybe we need to look at some of those things. So we're trying to work through some of that so that way maybe we can get the communication out there on that and. Um, maybe put some other educational material out there, I think would be really helpful, um, for the public.
Also, one more thing that is about, um, presentations and cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce, like. So a lot of businesses would find out what's going on and what, what they can do and what some of the benefits are and especially. Future forward ideas, which is very important.
Mm-hmm. I'm working with, we're working with some of those organizations to see what that looks like. I know currently I'm working with the Michigan Sustainability Business Forum. Um, they're mainly out of West Michigan, but they wanted to, uh, see if we could host a event in Isabella County. Uh, for the region and I believe you'll see something coming out on that in possibly February next year. Um, so yeah, we're trying to work with them so that way maybe we can present on, on some of these things.
Great, and, and I know that, um. Charity, Jake and myself have contacted Denise O'Neal, Denise, uh, Denise, who's the president of the Michigan Climate Lobby. I mean, not the Michigan Climate Action Network, and she, um, suggested that we, uh, we let them help us out doing a webinar. Uh, I wonder how that's going.
We, we've made contact on that. We're still trying to work through that whole process. Um, we're also looking at, uh, possibly having somebody come from Eagle and do a presentation. Um, for you guys on the, the sustainability or the economic viability on being able to, uh, look at doing it. An expansion on the facility, like, uh, Commissioner Moreno had, uh, touched on was that, you know, the viability of. Uh, the upgrading of the facility, the potential of trying to bring businesses in that can use that material that comes out of, uh, that recycling facility. Uh, always looking at trying to be able to find a way to, uh, drive the economics behind recycling.
Well, one more thing, please. Yeah, um, um, years ago I was sent to California by the city commission. And, uh, they had a really, uh, recycling, uh, facility there and this gentleman bought a kiln. And then he took all the glass that the facility was outputting and he turned it into an internet business selling goblets. Cups, plates and all that sort of thing. That was a real long time ago and I'd say there's probably a lot more opportunity for entrepreneurs right now. Dealing with some of the stuff that we have.
Before, I'd like to go, Mr. Borton, uh, could you upgrade? Uh, the timeline and the state requirements and where we're at as far as when we have to be, now that the plan has been submitted, could you just? Go through, tell the board where we're at at that.
Yeah, it, it's all a three-year process, um, it, it, the. If from, it, and, and realistically, we're at the point where we're almost approaching the two-year mark on what Eagle deemed all of this starting. So, uh, when you've, when you start looking at timelines, um, and Eagle's ability to try and push things forward. Uh, has been extremely slow. Um, everything that we have, we get back for feedback from Eagle is, is that, um, even though we're approaching a two-year mark. Um, we're at the point where our, um, our whole program has been approved. Uh, we are at about, uh, a year in compared to what Eagle says is a two, two years in. Uh, but they have also expressed that if any county, uh, or any, uh, planning group is working towards an end goal. Um, they are not gonna, they're not gonna penalize anybody. They will continue to work through all of that. Um, knowing that they're still trying to write a lot of this law and a lot of the rules. Uh, they're still trying to figure out the funding mechanism, uh, and, and everything. Uh, nothing's ever been allocated at the state level for this, so they're still trying to figure that part out as well, so. Um, you know, even though, like I said, uh, you know, you would think that, well, geez, now you only got a year left to be able to get this done. Um, as long as the people are working towards, uh, accomplished, um, end product, uh, that's what they're really, their main concern is.
Who do op- operations? Are you guys ready? Okay. For over nineteen years, uh, the Murph had operated processing material that was sourced separated in four bays. The four bays consisted of office paper, cardboard, newspaper and coal contained. With the change and everything going digital over the years, we've seen a steep decline in the amount of paper that we're getting coming into the facility. Um. We used to ship out probably one to two semi-loads a week and we're down to one load maybe a month if we're lucky.
Newspaper.
And newspaper. Um, although we've seen a decline in the paper products, we've also seen an, and, uh, we've seen an increase in the other material that's coming in. Uh, a- after January first of this year, the city of Mount Pleasant entered into a contract with Granger to pick up the city's curbside recycling. This city switched from a source separated collection service to a single stream collection. With the changes to the cl- collection converting to single stream, we had to take a look at what we were doing with operations. To see what we could do to change, to accommodate for that material coming in. Um, I know a lot of you, if you've been over there, you've known around this time of year, it's really hard to try to keep up with operations around the holidays. Because we get inundated with so much material and in years past, we've had materials sitting outdoors instead of keeping it inside the footprint of the building. So we ended up changing our operations from that four-bay holding system to a two-bay system. That is now fiber and coal contained. The fiber is the office paper, newspaper and cardboard all mixed in one. And the other is a coal contain, which is everything else pretty much. Um. The new system allowed for some time for us to work through the added single stream material that was coming to the facility while. Giving us more room to keep the material confined within the building. It also allowed for us to change how we were picking material up to make sure that we're running our collection services as efficient as possible. Which helps cut down on the sorting time at the curb and it, it cut down on safety for, for safety for our employees. After taking the time to work through the material and with some of the trial and error to make sure that we were running as efficient as possible. As of October twenty-ninth, we were able to accept more material from a couple of the major haulers. We are estimating that the added material could result in at least an additional five hundred plus tons per year. We've also seen an increase in approximately nine tons per month of the material coming from the city since they switched to single stream collection. So when they were picking up the source separated material, what I did is I took an average from the months last year. From the source separated material to what they're collecting now and we're seeing more material coming out of the city. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact for the ease of use for the residents. Um, using that cart-based system, it allows them more room to be able to recycle more material. Were you gonna say?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the biggest things, uh, you know, the understanding of, uh, that curbside cart when it comes to the recycling. Uh, that really does increase the amount of product that gets recycled. Um, you know, and in some cases it can increase your contamination a little bit. But I don't believe that at this point that we've seen that increase in contamination. Uh, we're still running a really good percentages. I think the last couple of months, we've been in somewhere around a five to five and a half, um, percent, uh, residual percentage, so. Our, our huge goal is to be able to keep it under ten percent. Um, and I don't think we've had any issues with being over ten percent this, all of this year, this fiscal year.
Just to give you guys a couple of numbers, the total material we've processed, uh, for twenty-five was four thousand three hundred and ninety-three point four eight tons. Um, and we expect those numbers to increase for twenty-six with the added material. Uh, we also brought in a little over two thousand cubic yards of brush, a hundred and seventy-four tires. And we had four hundred and twenty-three visits from out of county residents. So. Any questions?
So, so when you talk about bays going from four to two, that's, you're receiving the materials.
Yes, that, that's a tip.
So that means that if, uh, if somebody's bringing the materials in and now it's, uh, paper and newspaper and.
Now it's a paper and newspaper and cardboard, we have more uh sorting. Here because we still have to uh ship it out in those various components, correct?
You are gonna have a little bit more sort time on it, but it's, it's really minimalized. Um, and I say that because reference back to her, one of the first comments that she made on the amount of newspaper we had. Um, you know, five years ago compared to what we have now. Um, you know, five years ago or ten years ago, you know, when you're, you're running two loads of newspaper a week. Um, now we're running one load a month. Um, you know, if you take all of that into consideration, it's gonna give you the obvious that. Uh, there's no nears near the amount of paper or newspaper or sorted office paper in that material.
One of the other deciding factors on that too is that we had a bay full of paper that was sitting there for so long. That when we went to go process it, there was like that much dust sitting on top of it, so it was really. You know, it was wasted, kind of wasted space. If we weren't able to process it that much because we were too busy running the other material. So that's why we were like, well, with i- if it's sitting there that much, we're not really taking in that much. It makes more sense for us to utilize that space i- instead of having the material sitting outside, so.
I misplaced my folder and I had all this information in there, so could you, do you remember the numbers, some of the numbers on the projections? With the MMP, the numbers tonnage you replace, you said what we were, we're having, but.
The expectation for tonnages to be able to increase, uh they figured within a. Uh, between one to three years max that uh they could go from where we are now, like forty-three hundred tons. Um, to upwards of twelve thousand tons within three years or less. If we continue to be able to work with the surrounding counties and figure a way to be able to make that work to bring material in. Um, and then the long-range forecast on that was uh from upwards of five years. Uh, between five and seven years, they figured that the facility could get to somewhere around twenty-five thousand tons a year. Uh, you know, it's just, eh, eh, there's a lot of ways to look at that. Um, some of the ways that I look at it is is that some of the surrounding counties that we're working with does not do an awful lot of recycling. Um, or attempt to educate or or find ways for them, for their residents to be able to find recycling. Uh, this gives that access.
Um, I remember there was something like if you're a municipality with more than five thousand people. You have to have curbside recycling, how's that going or when does that go into effect? I'm not sure.
It is part of the material management planning and it's actually a city of over ten thousand residents um is what that requirement is. So out of all the counties, you know, there's gonna, that we're working with, there's gonna be a few select cities that's gonna have to have uh curbside recycling. And realistically, almost every one of them at this point already does that. Um, you know, with the city of Mount Pleasant being the only, the only municipal within Isabella County's border, city of Midland. Um, you know, the city of Big Rapids, you know, their populations are over that number that they would have to have curbside, but they're already doing it.
It's one of those interpretations that we're working on. Available, so what's, you have to make it available, so what does that entail? It's one of the things that they're still. Trying to decide what Eagles is. What that language actually means, it can be interpreted several different ways, so.
As, as few as ten years ago. Accessibility to recycling was considered within forty miles of you. Um, and you know, and I, we have, you know, we have eleven depot sites within Isabella County. Um, you know, but you start, the farther you go to the north, the accessibility, if you had a depot within forty miles, they consider that accessible. Um, you know, with the change in the material management planning laws, uh it is focused on being able to try and drive that number down less. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is a port, appointments to boards and commissions and I'm gonna do something a little different today. I'm gonna kind of go around the table and we'll each present, I, instead of me talking for the next hour. Uh, we'll give everybody a chance to, to talk a little bit, so. We'll just start, maybe we'll start with Commissioner Gil Zinski.
We were happy with your talking. The adjustment to your pay scale. The first one is a consider appointing three members to Isabella County Board of Public Works to complete a three-year term. Ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight until a successor is appointed. And I think we do these one at a time. Um, so with that, I will place a nomination. Oh, that's right. So we have three people. We have uh Tim Warner, who's the incumbent. And we also have Latricia Powell and Brian Jackson. Uh, so we have that, that interest. I do have a question though in regard to this appointment. Do we uh in the information provided, give a background of, of the uh organization or the committee's assignments? Cause I, I look at these and I see some pretty high-profile people and I think this is a, one of the committees that has very defined, limited. Uh, responsibilities and, and I'm wondering if sometimes people uh apply because they don't understand.
We have the applications on the website, but really no further information beyond them, just. Looking up the Board of Public Works themselves or something like that, there's no individual flyers for each of the different committees.
Cause I'm thinking this is one that would be of particular interest to Lincoln Isabella. Um, cause of responsibilities, but anyhow, we have those three and. Uh, I think we have three qualified applicants, but we do have a incumbent which we often tend to favor.
We, we do favor incumbents and uh Tim Warner. Spent thirty-five years as an engineer, project manager uh with the Drank Commission here in the about county.
I think the only one that we actually had requirements for was the recently opioid committee. Where we had certain qualifications, but I don't think there's any other. Qualification requirements on any other committee, they got the only one that we set up or had certain. Requirements as far as experience, so everything else is pretty well open.
Any, any other discussion or questions on this one?
That's your item B.
All right, consider appointing one member to the Commission on Aging Advisory Board District Two Representative. To complete a three-year in term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight or until successor is appointed. We have uh one incumbent, Ruth Ann Manito.
Yep, she's been on this board for many years, uh retired.
Item C, consider appointing one member of the Commission on Aging Advisory Board District Five Representative to complete a three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Or until a successor is appointed. So we have one incumbent, Alicia Haley.
Yep, and Alicia Haley has a professor and grant administrator at CMU. She has a doctorate in education leadership.
Okay, next up, we have consider appointing one member to the Commission on Aging Advisory Board at Large Representative. To complete a three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight or until a successor is appointed. And we have one incumbent, Jessica Lab, I think she's been in the. What few years.
Been on that board for a while, that's. Uh, also from CMU. Jessica is a program coordinator and she's also been on the Union Township Planning Commission. And item E, consider appointing one member to the Transportation Commission County Citizen Representative. To complete a three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight or until a successor is appointed. Uh, we have one applicant, Brian Jackson. And I believe his uh application said he is a twenty-year Air Force veteran.
Um, so you do item F.
Consider appointing two members to the Parks and Recreation Commission uh County Citizen Representatives. To complete a three-year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight or until a successor is appointed. Uh, Ruth Barrett, Jordan, I'm gonna slaughter this name. Uh, Lily Jackson and a Brian Jackson.
I know the, the two incumbents there, Ruth Barrett's been involved in a lot of things. It's a Fremont Township trustee, she's been on the zoning board. Been on the city and district library boards for a number of years. She's been a Isabella County Elections Inspector for fifty years. Um, and then Jordan Burzema. Uh, has had sixteen years as a Parks and Rec Professor at CMU. Uh, and has been on this Parks and Rec Board for several years. Great, experienced, well-qualified folks. Um, brings down to item G, would you do item G?
Consider appointing three members to the Planning Commission County Citizen Representative to complete a three-year term ending December thirty-first. Two thousand twenty-eight or until a successor is appointed. And applicants are Philip Vogel, Russell Hyde. Adam Brookins, Latricia Powell, Brian Jackson and Laurie Jackson.
Three positions and uh three incumbents. Six total applicants for that one, so it's good to see that kind of interest. Uh, for sure, do you want to do the, the next one, sir?
Yep, H, consider appointing two members to the Zoning Board of Appeals County Citizen Representative. To complete a three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight or until a successor is appointed. So the applicants are Brent Duffett, Thomas Cromer, Latricia Powell. Well, we have few incumbents and the one thing that I see in all of these is we have a very qualified individual in Latricia Powell. And she really has a heart into doing some public service, but she's running up against incumbents in just about every one of these appointments. So if she doesn't uh get appointed to one of them, I hope she considers uh continuing. Her search, would be nice to find a spot for her.
There are three members for the Public Works and three of, there's, and she's one of them, right? I would definitely be as eighth.
Okay, and we will uh take nominations for those at next Tuesday's meeting. Bring this down to committee reports. And item one, Mr. Swain, you would do that one for us, please?
All right, consider ratifying and placing on file the November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five invoice list. An amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. The December fifth, twenty twenty-five invoice. Still, an amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-seven cents. And the adjustments list dated November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
You wanna take those?
Yes, sir. For the November twenty-eighth list of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, forty-nine cents. The general fund portion is sixty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. On this first, each are all the invoices that are over five thousand dollars. This was sent out previously to the Board of Commissioners for their review and to ask any questions if uh they had any. Two of the biggies on this one is advanced benefit solutions for twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, two and six cents for the monthly dental and vision insurance. And a check was sent to the Isabella Conservation District for eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-five. Sounds out for the fall two percent distribution for the household hazardous waste. So we get the money and then we send a check out to the Conservation District or other ones that may have applied through the county. Yep, okay, for the December fifth invoice list, three hundred and. Forty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, twenty-seven cents, general fund is a hundred and seventy thousand, eight seventy-eight and ten cents. Uh, one check to Michigan State University for the fiscal year twenty-six, second quarter memorandum, work plan payment. University of Michigan Health for sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, fifty-five cents for November medical examiner fees. And then there's a couple of ones from Central Dispatch for Port Technology Corp for. Annual CAD software or annual core technology maintenance. And then a couple others related to uh trial courts and information systems.
Yeah, any questions on the December fifth?
I do, do you wanna update us on the medical examiner or do you wanna save that till we get a little more?
I'll wait till we get the, I'll just briefly say it in the minister's comments.
Okay, okay, just wanted that, I didn't know when that would be proper to put that.
And the last one is the adjustments list. These are the ones that are put on this list that invoices were voided for various reasons. Or invoices were added to avoid late fees or to get an early payment discount. On this and what you'll see is the traditional consumers' energy or food service. We do have on the second column. Uh, for Union Township, late fees were added because a check was lost in the mail. From various entities, the sheriff, the Murph and Commission on Aging, a check was sent out and, but. They never received it in time, so per township policy, a late fee is um established. Uh, we contacted Union Township staff to determine if in this situation, when we showed that we had a check cut, you know, would they waive pay. Will late fees and they did not, though. Not, I'm not throwing anybody the bus, they're just staff is following, staff is following their process. So if we want, we, our next step would be to appeal to the Township Board. Um, which given this amount, it's, you know, a couple thousand dollars, I'm gonna consider going down that route. Uh, unless there's any objection from this board, I think we should at least take it as an appeal uh to that and explaining, so. Whether or not they approve it, it's the right of every water customer to do that.
I certainly wouldn't object to the. Yeah, then we, we should ask him, but is, they were what, six or seven? Were, were those individual checks?
And one check that we all sent went down. Am I correct on those one checks? So, Mr. Landon, you'll probably get something in a couple of weeks.
Got to put you on the spot. We'll stop and force.
Okay, so that is the adjustments list. All right, any questions on any of that? All right, thank you. Where are we at? Item two, uh Commissioner Weber.
Consider approving the amended bylaws to the Human Rights Committee as presented.
And we have Chair Donna Giuliani, there to walk us through those changes.
If you like, yes, I can. Um, thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you all. As we began our bylaw review in April, we were looking at. Two challenges that the HRC currently faces. One is um engagement and the second is a skills gap. And so one of the things that we find is that we have some members of the HRC. That are very much engaged and then we have some members who perhaps are. Have less time to dedicate to community work. Um, despite their good intentions. And so when we were going through the bylaws. And so when we were going through the bylaws, um especially with the skills gap, we wanted to make it more explicit, the the connection between our um commission liaison, Jim Moreno, and um and our committee, and especially when it comes to the appointment of new members, we are hoping to us fill the skills gap. So we have a skills gap with um like the public presence, so Facebook, um social media, those kinds of things. We don't have someone on our committee currently who is inclined in that direction, and we really need that. We also need someone, for instance, who might be um able to contribute in pagination and the creation of um flyers and logos and we know that that skill set is in the community, and we know that that skill set has um a willingness to serve, but we don't have placement. We don't have a place for them at the moment. So working with um our commission liaison is really probably the amendment, the first amendment that you see is um really seeking to address the skills gap. And then the second issue that we are running into is um in particular, member engagement. And so we really sought to define what what engagement looks like beyond attending meetings. So that is being active and visible in the community, in particular with our community involvement events. And it also means being active on at least one subcommittee. And the subcommittees are a way that the HRC kind of portions up work in areas of need in our community. So toward the end, um you see some bigger changes to the bylaws. We used to have a process where if people weren't attending meetings regularly, we would invite them, we would send them a letter inviting them to resign from the HRC so that a new person could be appointed to fulfill um expectations of HRC membership. But I think one of the things that we find is that people who have checked out of a committee like the HRC also don't take that final step and write a letter resigning their post. And so what we would like to do is simply when someone does not meet um attendance requirements, we would like to send a letter to the commission through our commission liaison, Jim, asking for that person to be removed and a new person to be appointed. So we are basically skipping the self-selection to resign option for attendance. And then the next thing that we would like to do is that um if HRC membership is not active in the community engagement, which is one of our primary ways to benefit our community, and if they are not active on subcommittees, at least one subcommittee, then we are going to ask that they not be renewed um when their term expires, so that again, we can get people in who are ready to engage in the work of human and civil rights in Isabella County. Those, I think, are the major changes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sir. It'd be nice for the meeting, I I was just looking at the paper copy, and I found a couple of areas that there was some bold print. But usually, if you get a number of changes to a document, it'd be nice to have those changes uh shown on the document. So it'd be clear to the to the board.
Yeah. Donna, do you have a redline version of this?
Yes, I did supply. I can open it up in Zoom if you would like. I I'm sorry, I I did supply that, but I I get that it's not here. Um.
Always get in the materials for.
Yes, we can, we can send it out in a regular, for the regular meeting, the the redline version.
Appreciate it.
We'll check, we'll check back with you to make sure we we have that version.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just gonna make a another comment in that uh we seem to be blessed this time with appointments to committees, but sometimes we have people that just don't apply. And if you make it more uh more difficult or uh in terms of your requirements, it it might be have a negative impact in the future of having people step forward. Just just a thought.
Yes, um we had a couple months ago, three people that had submitted applications to serve on the HRC. And then when it came time for one member to be replaced, you only had one application. And so we moving forward, um I would like to work I would like to work toward more, uh hmm, how do I say this? When people are ready to cycle off, it would be nice if we knew so that um people that we know who want to apply could have a fresh application in.
I believe what we do is that uh we have a spreadsheet of every one that's terms enough and stuff like that. So we do that with individual board know that when you have expiring terms, we kind of give you notice before we post it on the county's website.
And in the past, it's usually the individual, but not necessarily the chair. So um it might be good to add the chair on.
On the communication.
On the communication.
And and what's the lead time on that communication? I wondered.
Two, a couple of months.
Couple of months, yeah.
At least at least sixty days.
Yeah. I had also know that didn't, when I was on uh the committee in the past, we did have significant issues with uh two members who were not showing up to meetings or responding and did not respond to uh emails or communications to resign in the past. And it took, I I sort of like it took two years to get those members replaced um because of the lack of communication. So I'd certainly uh really support that change in this policy, I think. Um it really puts you in a um under a rock if you can't do anything.
Sure. Yep, this might take care of some of that, uh Commissioner Moreno.
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairperson. And uh yeah, I know it was hard work, and I've returned to it. Uh Commissioner Swainy just said, and you you and others did a really, really good job on these, on these bylaw changes. And I think that it will make it, especially like the part where there's gonna be more specificity in what you need, like you mentioned, the skills, but um also to uh make the board uh more um active and uh connected with the community. And uh it will make it easy, like I said, kind of, I'm re-stating this, it will make it easier for commissioners here to look at the applications, knowing what we know that you let us know, and try to match up those people with with the things we need on the board. And I know it's really hard, hard. I really thank all the people that worked on that in the HRC.
Yeah, it's a committee that we always seem to have several applicants for openings, so. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, Johnny, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move on to item three, yeah.
Yeah, consider approving the memorandum of agreement between the region, Southern Area Agency on Aging and Isabella County Commission on Aging for evidence-based Tai Chi for arthritis program in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same. This is very ironic, because I suffer from rheumatoid arthritis, and one of the limited treatments is exercise stretching.
Well, you're in luck, because it's happening right now.
Unfortunately, I can never tell your clients, because I got too many other meetings to attend. But I do do it at home.
Oh, good. Good. Well, yes, we've had this funding for several years now. It's since uh Title III D funding through the Older Americans Act that becomes available through Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. And so we can apply it to them for these funds. And this just helps reimburse a portion of the cost that we uh we spend every year to provide this program. And it's a wonderful program. It's so popular here. Jim Vanderme is our instructor and just does such a wonderful job. And um so so wonderful that we have to have overflow overflow rooms, because our fitness room can't hold everybody in some other session. So um they have two different sessions every uh Tuesday and Thursday that take place here. So it's it's a really great program, helps a lot with balance and stretching is is definitely a great thing with that, but uh it's great for arthritis as well.
Yes. Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And item four, consider approving the no financing for the Struble number five eight four County Drain as well as Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, pledging full faith and credit to Struble Drain Drainage District Bonds or Notes, and authorize a county clerk to sign the same. And Mr. Lowensberry, pardon me?
Bird, B Y R D.
Oh, bird, okay. Um so yeah, this Struble Drain, um it's a petition project in our office. It's made it through the design process, and we've collected bids. Um now we're getting to the financing part of that. Um so the cost for the project was like one point two eight million. Um anything over a million requires this full faith and credit. That's a, I'm sure you guys are familiar, but it's a backing from the county. Um it's very beneficial to the taxpayers, because um there's, with this full faith and credit in place, the interest rate is significantly lower for this note that we need to complete this project. So um I think we've got around a dozen multiple-year drains like this that are ongoing right now. And I'm unaware of any of them that don't have the full faith and credit backing behind them.
Uh in this project, it's, if you guys are unfamiliar, it's just East of Shepherd. It's about just shy of five miles of drain that's gonna be reconstructed. There's some open ditch. They'll reconstruct a channel. There's, I think there's ten or twelve road crossings that'll go in, uh different, well, road crossings, farm crossings, and stuff like that. Um and then the tile is gonna be replaced.
Yes, this wouldn't this um entail more work, you know, workers. So that's great, too.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
And actually, yep.
And item, uh, Mr. Campbell, would you take that?
Consider approving the contract between the County of Isabella as the fiscal agent for Great Lakes Bay, Michigan Works, and Janet Bloomfield, beginning November first, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and authorized for chairperson to sign the same.
Speak to that one?
Yes, uh this is a Great Lakes Bay, Michigan Works contract. The inter-local agreement in which the five counties operate under to form this consortium group is expiring next year. And so this individual will be there to help coordinate the inter-local agreement process. Uh they do have one member from each county that'll be on this board as well to uh work on this inter-local agreement. I I will be the one that'll be working on this behalf of Isabella County with as consultant to draft a revised inter-local agreement for Great Lakes Bay, Michigan Works.
Great. Any questions or comments on that item? Okay. Item six, Fisher Moreno, would you take that one for us, sir?
Consider approving budget amendment twenty twenty-five two four B O C to adjust congregate HDM homemaking, personal care, rested care for updated fiscal year twenty-five NGA A A A grant, and authorize the board chair to sign the same.
I'm glad you got to read it, not me. Good morning. Um, John, do you want to join me for this one to give them backgrounds, or do you want me?
That's about the cold touch. I was just gonna give them the uh the, just a little bit of background. I'm doing a budget amendment for a prior fiscal year. Um but this is your grant, so go ahead and speak to your grant person. I'll give them the finance.
So I apologize, because I sent this late, so to Chris, but we had actually um Region Seven at the very end of the year, which happens frequently. If they have extra money left over, then they'll contact the different agencies and and then they will they will disperse those funds to us. And so they did that at the end of the year, just adjusting unit rates, so we didn't have to provide more services, because the year was already ending. Um and so this just just adjusted our revenues, like we just received more money. And unfortunately, I sent this to Chris after the fiscal year ended, and so not realizing that that was an issue.
Well, we typically, it it looks like, I mean, looking at past history, this, we usually do that anyway. But uh for me, being the the finance director, the sheriff, I wanted to look into, are we supposed to be doing budget amendments after fiscal year end? The answer to that is yes, when it comes to one of these. Um I looked into the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. It does let us do that. Um actually, uh the auditors prefer it because it matches up our actual revenues, our grant revenues to to what we actually did. So um it it reflects actual and verifiable changes. So um just wanted to let you folks know this is okay to do. Um so this is just matching up Jen's Jen's grant revenues then, so we can uh match it up to those extra, almost uh, it's almost thirty thousand dollars of extra grant revenue that come in for her program. So wonderful thing.
Yeah, and for us, it helps as well, because we have an annual audit with area agency, and then this will allow us to match them. Because it's just on our budget side. So just makes it easier.
We'll take it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Good to match things up.
Yep.
Any other questions about that particular budget amendment?
Yeah, thank you. Uh brings us down to item seven, would you?
Consider approving budget amendment twenty twenty-six dash zero six B O C to move reimbursable probation officer wages and fringes to Child Care Fund and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
And so this um this grant is the one we we talked about. We hit on it a little bit during budget time. We always budget the probation officers in uh general fund through the courts. Um that's where they kind of sit, because we don't know from year to year whether Child Care Fund is going to cover these wages and fringes. So we found out they are. Now we're doing the budget amendment to move them, uh saving the general fund uh almost two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that they're covering. So in wages and fringes, and that's three probation officers. Um and there are some additional things that 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 Child Care Fund is covering, too. I believe it's uh up to a certain percentage of the magistrate as well, but that's separate. And we've already accounted for that in your budget. So just want to make sure we're uh reflecting, our budget's reflecting with that grant.
That's over and above what they've covered in the past?
No, they actually covered a little more than this. They actually cut this back a little bit. Um but we are still getting at least the probation officer. So we just do the budget amendment after the fact, because we've already been um put our budget out, fiscal year budget out for the public um at the time when we kind of start finding out about this. So that's why it's always after the fact. You you folks have passed our budget, and then when we find out for sure, this is what they're covering, and then we go do the the accounting on the background.
So changing, uh taking it to the Child Care Fund, this is a hundred percent reimbursable. When we bill this to the state?
Yes.
It is a hundred percent?
I actually, I'm sorry. It's not. It's, I believe it's seventy-five percent.
But still, it's But still, it's gonna have a positive impact on.
Absolutely.
What a nice Christmas gift.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And that, like I said, that's one of the funds that always give me a little bit because it's impossible to predict what's going to happen in the year as far as this childcare or what we're responsible. They did it, changed it a few years ago where we uh they give the money up upfront a little bit, and before we had to submit it. So that that was kind of a nice change the state did, but it's still
Right.
very unpredictable until about the last end of the fiscal year because it could change, you know, in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, it's um.
We like to see it under, but it does.
It's a spooky one because.
Gives me nervous because it could go
Just like that.
way over budget, so it's really hard, so. Because we're required, there's no limit. We're just required to pay that, so.
Any other questions on that? All right, that brings us to item eight, Commissioner Sweeney, would you read that?
Consider approving budget amendment twenty twenty-six dash zero seven B O C to move defined benefit expense from general fund to friend of the court and authorize board chairperson to sign the same.
Yeah, so this one's some kind of some housekeeping here. Uh this particular employee has actually worked in the front of the court for many years, but for some reason, her defined benefit expense is hitting general fund and not to the court. Uh granted, general fund has to cover friend of the court as well, but let's get her defined benefit uh going to the same fund as her wages and fringes are. So that's what we're doing. We're moving it out of general fund. We're putting it in front of the court. Uh Carrie Curtis, a big thank you to her, uh her and her team caught this, that this particular employee saw, you know, wages and fringes were were hitting where they were supposed to, uh but not all of the fringes, the DB part of it was was not. So I'm glad that they looked into that and let me know so that we can uh get this moved around and get it corrected.
Yes, that's true. All right, and uh item nine, Commissioner Weber.
Consider scheduling the twenty twenty-six Isabella County Board of Commissioners organizational meeting for Tuesday, January sixth, twenty twenty-six at five to be held in the Isabella County Commission on Aging Building located at twenty-two hundred South Lincoln Road, Mount Pleasant, Michigan, forty-eight five eight.
Okay. And uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, regardless, whoever's gonna hand us, we do this uh that there is no new commissioner is going to be elected unless somebody resigns or something else. Usually the committee appointment stays the same. But if somebody is unhappy with their assignment or wants a different one, you need to get going because there's a little bit horse trading, trying to talk to, somebody wants to give up their position to do that. So up until that point, if we have any changes you would like, we will start to work on that before. Because we like to have all them situated at the organizational meeting, but if you're unhappy or you want something, let me know and we'll start trying to figure out how to do that, so.
Good. Any questions on?
So we may have a paper copy of those appointments uh in our files at home, but maybe uh though it could be sent out to the commissioners.
Yeah. And we're also on, like when we started in years, the O E P committee wasn't on there, so we'll be adding that one on uh on the permanent uh appointment basis.
Okay.
Since that was created in mid-year.
All right, uh that completes uh the business items, the committee of the whole, and we don't have the intergovernmental affairs, but.
Just uh the one boy, you'll see, uh there'll be a contract for medical examiner services. An RFP went out um a number of weeks ago. Uh no bids were submitted. Uh one other group that we were looking at um decided, you know, they were too busy with other things and could not take on the Isabella County. So we're reaching out and coming up with different ideas, so we'll get things finalized this week with a contract um to be placed in front of you at next Tuesday's meeting, but it'll be put into the board packet uh for that contract approval. I know it's kind of last minute, but it was kind of a strange confluence of events that kind of had this, but we'll get it in time and somebody will be ready to go January first for medical examiner services, which the county has.
So did we get a proposal from our current medical examiner?
They did not send one, and I've been in contact back and forth with them on some other various issues related to things, and so um that's still in fluxes. So I'm not sure why it was put out in the same places that uh was put out uh last year, and so I don't know.
Very good. Um we don't have any unfinished business or new business, general public comments? Everybody online? Nobody rushing up to the table, so we'll move right along to announcements. Missures, any announcements? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm glad you announced this. Uh the Court of Claims dismissed the suit against the uh cannabis tax for roads. And so that was up in the air, and so those, that tax will go into effect next month. And people will still keep using cannabis.
Thanks.
Any other announcements?
Yes.
Uh I just okay, um we had a uh sent out a RFP for designed bid build proposals for the admin buildings. We had a pre-bid meeting, a mandatory pre-bid meeting yesterday um at the admin building. There were twenty-eight firms that attended that pre-bid meeting, so. Yeah, we're very excited about that turnout. Uh don't know how many actual proposals we'll get from that, but for twenty-eight firms to show up uh for that meeting was very encouraging, so. Uh maybe twenty twenty-six is the year we get this back on track and and get rolling on, trying to get back in that building. Any other announcements? Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I just wanted to let the commissioners know that um the one complaint we did have in regards to, well, what if someone doesn't use social media or computers to see the agenda and information? Um we're going to revert to the way we used to before where the entire agenda and everything within the agenda is printed out and available for those to come in and go through and see. We're going to have that the administration building, five-ten West Pickard, and then also at my building, two S F Court Street. That way they could physically come in if they want. I think we have it done like that Friday. So it gives them enough time before the meeting to go through everything.
So they can get a hard copy of the entire.
They can pay for her copy if they would like. It's all a lot of paper. But or they can sit down and go right through it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, then we will adjourn